This evening's meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. Welcome H. Wayne Wilson and his listening audience at CVU as well as Cable Channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council microphones are open for roll call.
Mayor Artis.
Here.
Councilmember Ali. Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Grab.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Montalongo.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Rigenbach.
Here.
And Councilmember Ruck Regal.
Here.
You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'd like to invite everyone to join us and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two proclamations this evening, and we'll start off with the Illinois American Water Company 130th anniversary.
in communities like the city of Peoria where residents depend on the Illinois River and groundwater for critical drinking water, fire protection, and economic development. And whereas Illinois American Water has continued to invest in the local water system, including putting over $200 million of investment in its Peoria District operations since 2005 to ensure safe, reliable service. And whereas Illinois American Water's employees not only work around the clock in all types of weather to ensure safe drinking water to their friends and neighbors, but they also give back to the community through volunteerism, educational events, and environmental stewardship, working to protect our precious water resources and grow tomorrow's diverse water industry team. And whereas Illinois American Water has a proud 130-year history in the city of Peoria and remains committed to ensuring quality water service to its customers, now therefore I, Jamar Artis, Mayor of the city of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby recognize Illinois American Water's 130th anniversary in Peoria, Illinois. We have a big representation from the water company with us tonight, but Roger Goodson, Senior Manager of Production and Field Operations for the Western Division will speak on behalf of the entire group. Roger?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and all the previous members of leadership in Peoria over the years. We truly enjoy our partnership and we look forward to another 130 years here. Most people take water for granted, however, a lot goes into providing safe, clean water. And the backbone of that is our employees, some of whom are here. So I also want to thank all our current, past, and future employees for always putting you, our customers, first. And lastly, I want to thank the current leadership of Leuna 165, Tim Schmidt-Gall and Matt Bartolo, and Operating Engineers 399, Ken Golf, and all of their predecessors for always working together for the safety of our employees who are our biggest asset and the great relationships that we have with them. So, thank you very much.
Next, we have the Peoria County City Citizens Leadership Academy graduation. You guys want to come on down? We have Gretchen Pierceall from the county and Amy Dotson from the city, and all the Whereas the city of Peoria has again partnered with Peoria County to offer the Peoria City County Citizens Leadership Academy for the 11th consecutive year, and whereas the Citizens Leadership Academy is a community education course that raises awareness of the responsibilities of local government and their services while offering participants the opportunity to experience local government in a unique, hands-on environment. And whereas academy participants explore public safety, law enforcement, animal welfare, and a variety of other local government responsibilities, and whereas many elected and appointed officials and staff have given their time to present the sessions to these interested and involved citizens. And whereas the Peoria City County Leadership Academy participants are deservedly graduating tonight, now therefore I, Jamar Artis, Mayor of the city of Peoria, do hereby recognize and celebrate the Peoria City County Citizens Leadership Academy graduates in Peoria, Illinois. So I'm going to turn it over to the folks in the city and the county, but, you know, in 11 years, this program really has done an outstanding job of educating a lot of people that love this community and want to participate more fully, but it opens their eyes to a lot of the different levels and a lot of the things that happen within the city. And then they're, they become ambassadors, if you will, that can help explain some of these things to their neighbors and folks at their churches and schools and so on. So it's a very valuable resource for the city and the county. We appreciate those that take their time to participate in the academy, and we're really happy to congratulate them on their graduation this evening.
Good evening. I'm Officer Amy Dotson. I am a co-chair of the City-County Leadership Citizens Leadership Academy. I am co-chair for the city along with representatives from Peoria County, which are Jamie Dowell and Gretchen Pierceall. I'd like to take a moment to thank everyone behind me for taking time out of their busy schedules to learn more about the infrastructure of city and county government and how each department functions. I'm going to read off the names of those listed behind me, and we do have a number of individuals that could not make it tonight. So starting with who's here, and if you guys would raise your hand so we know who you are, that would be great. First is Chris Williamson. Kimberly McGee. Alicia Harris. Becky Spencer. Dustin Spencer. Jeffrey Council. Mary Wise. LaShonda Reynolds. Rhonda Elmore. And finally, Ivorra Hearn. Last but not least, and those individuals that could not make it tonight are Carol Cook, Samer Al-Darabi, Monique O'Reilly, Paula Keys, Keisha Phillips, Jennifer Pierce, Brenda Ananachi, Jody Smith-Brown, and Corey Allen. Again, I'd like to thank everyone for taking time to learn more about the city and county leadership.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the city council meeting held on September 24, 2019, as printed.
Seconded by Councilmember Kelly, are there any changes or corrections for the minutes? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Our first item of business is a township item, 19-305, is a request from the town officials to approve the September 2019 actual expenditures and to approve the October 2019 anticipated expenditures for the town of the city of Peoria.
Thank you. Trustee Grab.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Motion to approve, seconded by Trustee Rigenbach. Are there any corrections or changes? Or discussions? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We're at the consent agenda. 19-306 is a request to approve and authorize the administration to hold an auction at the city of Peoria operations and maintenance facility on Dries Lane Saturday, October 12, 2019. 19-307 is, has two parts. The request to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Peoria and the county of Peoria under the Edward Byrne Memorial JAG Program for 2019 local solicitation in the amount of $62,801. B is to adopt an ordinance amending the city of Peoria 2019 revised annual budget relating to the capital fund to recognize the receipt of the Edward Byrne Memorial JAG grant in that same amount. 19-308 is a request to approve a resolution establishing the downtown Peoria Innovation District. 19-309 is a request to adopt an ordinance, amending Ordinance 17629 approving the Peoria 812 Development LLC redevelopment agreement. 19-310 is a request to approve the site application for a Class H temporary outdoor liquor license from Build Peoria for an event to be held in the 1,200 to 1,300 blocks of southwest Adam Street on Saturday, October 12, 2019. And 19-311 is the appointment by Mayor Artis to the Sister City Commission with a request to concur of Kim Blinkenstaff. So that completes your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any items to remove from consent this evening? Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 19-308, please.
308. Thank you. Any other items to remove from consent? Okay, we have a motion to approve the remaining items, Councilman Euler, and seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
19-308 is the resolution establishing the downtown Peoria Innovation District.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could ask for privilege of the floor to call forward Jake Hammond, who is the brainchild behind this item.
All right, good evening. Thank you, Councilwoman Moore, and thank you, Mayor, and other council members and city staff for allowing us the opportunity to bring this resolution before you tonight. Since the last time I presented, much progress has been made in bringing an optimistic and inclusive spotlight to the various aspects of innovation activity happening in our region. We've launched several meetups, helped mentor several early-stage entrepreneurs, launched a platform called Peoria Made aimed at helping support our local maker and artisan community, built some great partnerships with local and national partners, promoted our growth to national ecosystem builders in both Madison, Wisconsin, and Cedar Rapids, Iowa, and have even been asked to consult with some cities like Denton, Texas, Lakewood, Texas, and even Portland, Oregon, based on the work we're doing here in Peoria. Beyond the resolution in front of you this evening, we're working hard on a variety of other initiatives, including an interactive media lab with the Peoria Public Library, an entrepreneurship certificate program with ICC, and an unprecedented collaborative effort between the CVB, the Chamber, the EDC, and ourselves to plan a Greater Peoria Homecoming Event the day before Thanksgiving with the goal of attracting alumni back to the region through a showcase of all the great things happening in our backyard. As you may have seen, just recently, Peoria moved from the 45th to the 36th best city in the Midwest for startups. In Illinois, Peoria ranks only behind Champaign in downstate Illinois. Our intent is to keep us rising in the ranks and to be a sought-after destination for entrepreneurial innovation and startup activity for years to come. The future truly is here, and we're honored to be in front of you today with an opportunity we feel will help us take a giant leap forward in transforming our city and our region. And finally, before I take any questions, I just wanted to thank some of our initial supporters, which you have support letters in your packet, which includes the Downtown Advisory Commission, Peoria County, the Greater Peoria EDC, Tri-County Regional Planning Commission, Shea Law, OSF Healthcare, CSE Software, First Mid Bank and Trust, Wells Fargo, Peoria Riverfront Museum, and Verizon Wireless. Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
The purpose of me asking Mr. Hammond to come in, we've talked a lot around the horseshoe about us losing citizens, especially the millennials, to other cities. They go to college, they don't come back, or they come back and find out that this is not the innovative town that they thought it was, and then they leave. And I think this is an effort that will help stem that tide and show Peoria as a destination place. I'm very excited about this district being outlined in the first district because there's a lot of things that's happening here. So with that, I'd like to move for approval.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Rigenbach. Any discussions or questions for Mr. Hammond? Okay, Councilman Montalongo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that was a great opening here, Jake, on your presentation here, and I'm glad that you pointed out that all these great things are already going on in Peoria and the great rating that we already have. I'm going to be very supportive of this tonight here. I just had a couple of questions. The only thing that I was, had a little bit of reservation on was the boundaries for this area here. Certainly, we have a lot of innovation going on and a lot of investment already put, like, for example, in the warehouse district, and this isn't including the warehouse district. And I know there's going to be some perks later on. And I guess, I guess a question to our city manager, if we want to change the boundaries at a later time, are we able to do that? And as far as tonight goes, we're not committing any dollars to this at this, at this point here, but just identifying the boundaries. And so, actually, I'll be very supportive of that, just hearing some of the feedback here from the city manager. I don't have any further, further questions.
Okay, thank you.
Comments? Thank you.
Just in terms of the area we've identified, the intent was it kind of being a Phase One, if you will, in trying to start small with a, I guess, a rather, not controllable, but clean area, and then be able to kind of expand beyond that. So perhaps Phase Two may go up towards the medical district and then down in the warehouse district, but just trying to keep it somewhat small so if we want to run some experiments that we can do them within that area, and then take those lessons learned and maybe expand them beyond that.
Okay. Very good. I'm not seeing any other lights. Mr. Hammond, maybe you would just like to let the public know about your little public event tomorrow morning?
Yeah, so we, pending approval, we are going to host a press event tomorrow morning. We were originally going to do it at the foot of Fulton Square, but we scouted that today as a little noisy, so we are going to be doing it in the lobby of the Peoria Riverfront Museum at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further lights for questions, we have a motion in a second. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
We're at first readings. 19-312 is a first reading review of an ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the Code of the City of Peoria relating to air rights, and this recommendation comes from the Construction Commission.
Director Black.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. The item before you this evening is an amendment to the building code which, which removes a challenge that some property owners have in town in terms of redeveloping buildings that are built to the property line. The image that's included, or the diagram that's included with this item, I think, provides some explanation. What I would like to say is that this is less about air rights and perhaps more about the recognition that the property line can be adjusted because of a private air right agreement. So the challenge that this is attempting to address and that we feel that it can address is a situation where, where there is a building that is built to the property line. Now, the side of that building cannot have any openings per the building code. It can't have windows, it can't have balconies, it can't have exhaust fans, it can't have any type of penetration that may create a fire hazard if the building is on the property line. So if someone wanted to redevelop a building or even wanted to construct a building that was built right to the property line, then they would need to obtain additional property. And one way to do that is simply to purchase the property next door and then move the property line. Now, that, that would seem like the simplest approach, but in some cases, the adjacent property owner may not be interested in selling that land. So what they could do as, as an alternative is the person who wants to build the building or develop the building could purchase air rights above a certain level. And I'll just use the warehouse district for an example. So in the warehouse district, buildings on the major streets can be eight stories tall. So there's potential eight stories of development space. And if someone wants to develop a building, perhaps the building next door is only a two-story building, and that property, property owner could purchase, using an air rights agreement, the right to cause the person with the smaller building to not build those additional six floors. So that's an air rights agreement. That can be done right now. It's a private agreement between two private parties. However, after they made that agreement, if the property that wants to be developed came to the city and asked for a building permit in order to put windows on the side of the building, we would tell them, you can't get a building permit for that because your building is still on the property line, regardless of this private agreement. What this ordinance does is it says, in the instance where there is an air rights agreement that has been recorded against the property, that for the purpose of penetrations in the side of the building, that we will recognize an adjustment to the property line per the air rights agreement. So that's a long explanation for, for what is happening here. It doesn't move the property line. It's really less about the air rights agreement, which is a private agreement, and it's more about the building code recognizing that an air rights agreement does allow for flexibility for the development of the building.
Thank you for that explanation for the council and also for the listening audience. Thank you for that explanation for the council and also for the listening audience. Questions for staff? Councilman Riegenbach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Director Black, I assume this isn't, we're not the first city to encounter this. Is the proposal before similar to what other cities have? Would you say this is comparable, or are we on the cutting edge here?
It's, it, it's not untypical in terms of what other communities have done.
I'm sorry?
It's, it's not unusual compared with what other communities have done. The wording is a little bit different based upon what the Construction Commission came up with, and, and it's really a much more simplified version than what we had started with, which I think was based upon what other communities have, have, have done. So the wording may be different, but no, we are not on the cutting edge of this, but it's certainly something that has never been anticipated here in Peoria, and I, I think it goes to show the, the potential development pressures that we have in, in, in town.
I see Mr. Freylinger and the audience. Has this got the blessing of the DDC?
The original request to consider this did come from the DDC, and they have been a partner in every step of this process before the Construction Commission. And I, I believe we went three or four times before the Construction Commission before we had something that they were, they were happy with.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Regal?
Thank you. Director Black, just a point of congratulations. I think, you know, we've got five pages in front of us, and having sat through a couple of those meetings at the Construction Committee, I, I think it goes without saying that the number of partners that all came together to be able to make this happen. You know, the DDC, the Construction Community, Community Development, I think the Fire Department also had, had some input into this as well. And I think that oftentimes, these are the things that we forget that we are working on as a city to, to really be able to make development be able to happen. And so congratulations to your team and everybody who had a fingerprint on this.
Thank you. Any further questions for staff on this one, or motion to approve first reading? Councilman Euler, seconded, Councilman Seer. Seeing no more lights, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
19-313 is a request to receive and file a first reading of an ordinance amending Appendix A, the Unified Development Code, relating to adult-use cannabis.
Director Black?
Thank you, Mayor. The item before you this evening is a recommendation on the zoning component of allowing adult-use cannabis within the corporate boundaries of the city of Peoria. And I'm, what I'd like to do is walk through the different categories of adult-use cannabis and the districts that we are recommending they be permitted in, and then also to talk about where some of the changes are from the current code. So to start with, the adult-use cannabis dispensary, so the dispensary is, is as it sounds, the kind of the retail front for the adult-use cannabis operation. Currently, medical cannabis dispensaries in Peoria, per action that the city council has already taken, are permitted uses, so permitted by right, in our industrial districts, I-1, I-2, and I-3. They are special uses in our commercial districts, CN, C-1, CG, C-2, and B-1, which is downtown. We are recommending that the adult-use cannabis dispensary be treated in the same way as the medical-use cannabis dispensary, so permitted uses in the industrial districts and special uses in the commercial districts. The only modification to that is that we are recommending that within the warehouse form district only of, of the form districts that we have, that, that medical and adult-use dispensaries be allowed. For cultivation centers, both, there really is no distinction between medical and adult-use cultivation centers. So for cultivation centers, currently, they are permitted in our industrial districts, and what we're recommending is that continue to be the case, adding in the warehouse district as, as an allowed area, and then adding in our agricultural districts, our A-1 districts, as special uses. I will note that there is, there's very little land within the city of Peoria that is zoned agricultural. We felt that this was appropriate as a special use, as in many ways it is an agricultural use, even though it would be within a building. The third category are craft growers. So this is, in many ways, similar to a, a cultivation center. Our recommendation here is that they be permitted uses within the industrial districts and within the warehouse form district, and then special uses, again, within our commercial districts. We are further recommending that through the zoning ordinance, that we limit a craft grower to no more than 5,000 square feet in commercial districts and 14,000 square feet in industrial districts. I'd also note here that we are recommending that craft growers can be an accessory use to a dispensary. So there could be a situation where there is the retail front, the dispensary, and there's a craft brewing operation behind or adjacent to, but connected to, the dispensary operation. The next type of use are infusers. Infusers, that's an operation that would take the active ingredients in, in cannabis and infuse them into products that would then be made available for sale at the dispensaries. For the infusers, we are recommending that they be permitted uses in the industrial districts and neither permitted nor special uses in the commercial districts. However, they would be allowed as accessory to dispensaries. Processors are sort of the other end of the infuser, where the processor is taking the active ingredients from the plants in order to make them available for use. And much like the infusers, we are recommending that they are permitted uses in the industrial districts, not permitted, either permitted use or a special use in the commercial districts, but they can be accessory to dispensaries. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director, maybe everybody else knows, but an infuser, is that like making edible products or processor? Which, I'm not sure what an infuser is or what an infuser does.
So, but my understanding and looking at the, the state statute, and, and we may have a better definition to my right, but the infuser is, is simply that. It, they would take the active ingredient from the cannabis plant and infuse it into whatever type of product is then sold, whether that's an edible product, or a cream, or whatever else is infused with the active ingredient. The processor is really the start after, if you think of it as a continuum, you start with the cultivation center or the craft grower that creates the raw product. The, the processor then takes the active ingredients from the raw product. The infuser takes those active ingredients and puts them into products that can be made for sale, and then the dispensary makes the items for sale.
Thank you.
Thank you. I had Councilmember Montalongo next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one question. As far, I see the warehouse district come up, I guess, in every one of them. Did you have a chance to meet with, like, businesses or property owners in the warehouse district to get feedback on this? It looks like a lot of concentration for this industry there that may just take over the entire warehouse district.
We, we did not have any meetings directly with warehouse district property owners in terms of, of the public hearing before the, before the Planning and Zoning Commission. There was no testimony provided, and, and then there were other public meetings regarding this item. In, in terms of the warehouse form district versus the other form districts, it, it has perhaps the density that would lend itself to this type of use from a, from a zoning standpoint, and simply from a zoning standpoint. I, I think in terms of the, the number of facilities, licenses, locations that, that could potentially be available within the city of Peoria, or be developed within the city of Peoria, I would, based upon the current law, I, I would be surprised to see multiple different operations pop up in any one area of town, including the warehouse district.
Okay. I had Councilmember Seer next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Black, just a few questions. Number one, from the last item on the agenda, we know that commercial property do have air rights, correct? Can you tell me a little bit about residential air rights for people that own residential properties, or are tenants of residential property, do they have air rights?
I, I think the answer is that every property owner has air rights to a certain level, to a certain elevation or altitude.
You also talked about industrial district. Is that the same thing as the industrial park?
The industrial districts here, the Pioneer Industrial Park, Mount Holly Industrial Park, would be, would be included in that. They are zoned I-1.
Okay. Any requirement? I mean, I'm concerned about safety right now, so I might ask this question about safety. I know in my industrial park, Fifth District, there's not much lights in there. There's not any sidewalks. How will we try to keep safe, the, the people there safe when this, this item goes through?
Councilman, I think, I think to answer that is, in terms of, of the cultivation use, maybe if I could break these down by, by their use categories. So the, the cultivation center and the craft grower and the infuser and the processor as standalone operations would typically not have any type of customers, any, any type of retail customers or the public going to those locations, because the product that they are creating is not available at the cultivation center, or the craft grower, or the infuser, or the processor. For the dispensary, which, which is a public-facing location, which is a retail location, we can certainly, when, when we bring this item back, we can certainly bring back some additional requirements to answer your, your concern about safety and security. In, in all of our light industrial areas, there are currently retail operations, or public-facing operations, whether that's the Clubs at River City, or tile shops, or other operations that, that have the public going there. So in, in, again, from a zoning standpoint, when we look at the intensity of the use, this is a use where someone is going somewhere to purchase something, and then they're taking it home with them. And, and so from that perspective, what we would be looking at is the safety and security of those persons going to that location with the purpose of purchasing something and then leaving. But we can certainly work on some, some controls or additional conditions.
Thank you. Last question, and I'm not sure you're the right person to, to answer, but again, I'm, I'm concerned with enforcement. We're looking at six different items on this, this list here. The last one's on private property at the discretion of any person, business and landlord. So I'm, I'm concerned, that's why I was asking about air rights. Now, if, if my neighbor is, you know, smoking cannabis and it comes this, no, my way, is this enforceable? And I'm getting these, I mean, kind of a crazy question, but I am getting those questions right now. So that's why I'm concerned, the people that has neighbors that, that might use the product, but they're not using it. I mean, it's going to take years, really, to maybe answer this question or, or have some enforcement, but I'm just curious.
Councilman, I'm going to defer to the legal department in terms of the question of, of someone who is consuming cannabis on their property and the neighbor is impacted by that.
I think it will take a while to see exactly how that issue is going to be addressed, but at this point, the state has clearly said, "In your own home and at your residence, including a backyard, somewhere where you have a slight expectation of privacy, you are entitled to use the product."
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. I had Councilmember Ali next.
Thank you, Mayor Artis. Director Black, just a few questions. First, under the craft grower line item, the limit to 5,000 square feet for commercial and 14,000 square feet for industrial, how did you arrive at those numbers?
Councilwoman, what we, what we did was, we, we looked at kind of typical, commercial-sized operations that were not retail-fronting versus industrial-sized operations. So any, any type of, whether it's a cultivation center, or a light assembly plant, or whatever else it might be, at, at some point, it goes from being a kind of a typical commercial use that you would find in a commercial district where people are coming and going and, and buying chewing gum and whatever else they might buy. And then once it gets to a certain size, it's really more of an industrial use. And so there, there's no, there's nothing magic about that, that 5,000 square feet, but it's a pretty typical size in terms of saying as a, as a, as a use on its own, it, once it gets larger than that, it's really into more of an industrial use.
So it wasn't benchmarked against other cannabis-type locations in other cities? It was just based upon commercial versus industrial, any, any type of business? Is that correct?
Yes, but particularly because, at least in Illinois, all of the communities that are looking at this are really kind of at the same stage. We're all moving forward together.
Right.
Or at least within some type of, of short distance of each other. So there's not a lot of examples to look at to say, "Here's what this community did, and it's worked."
Right. No, I meant in other states that have...
We, we looked at other states, but, but the rules and regulations in other states at the state level are also different, and, and so we really kind of came back to saying, "This is something that makes sense just from a commercial use versus an industrial use," without really thinking about what that commercial use or what that industrial use is.
All right. And I attended the two public hearings on cannabis, cannabis, and found them to be very educational. But I, I guess my question is similar to Councilwoman Moore in terms of clarification on the infuser. If a person, and I recall a young lady who had a, one of the young ladies who spoke out at the hearings, she had a cupcake shop, retail shop, and she had an interest in edible cannabis as part of her cupcakes, brownies, those types of products. Is that considered an infuser-type of business? I mean, that's retail. Is that, that's not in here? Is that right? That's not recommended here? That's not recommended here? Is that an option?
That is an option. So, I think, to use the example of brownies or cupcakes or whatever it might be, if it was a standalone infuser operation where the public is not going there, so it's just for an example, it's a warehouse building, they're making cupcakes or cookies or whatever it is they're making, and within that building, the employees are infusing the active ingredients into those cupcakes and brownies. And then, they put them all in boxes and they put them in some type of secured vehicle and they drive the secured vehicle somewhere else. In that case, it's a standalone infuser operation, which we are recommending is an industrial use. But, we do, or we are recommending that an infuser be allowed as an accessory use to a dispensary. So, back to the same, you know, cookies, cupcakes, brownies. If someone has, if someone is making, baking the cookies, cupcakes and brownies in the back of a space and then they have a retail front where the public can walk in and purchase them, then in that case, that can be in a commercial district.
So, there would have to be a dispensary? Is that right? There would have to be a dispensary in order to infuse and then have a retail shop up front? No?
It would have to be, in order to dispense the product, then they would need to be a dispensary both through local regulations and through state law. They want to infuse, if they want to make the product or make some of the products that they are selling in the back of the dispensary, they can do that. That's an accessory use. It's accessory to the primary use, which per this recommendation would be the dispensary. If it's a company that is just making the cookies, they have no interest in actually selling, they just want to make the cookies and then they pass them on to a dispensary in Peoria or somewhere else in Illinois where they're selling it, that's an industrial use. That's the same way that if someone is making eyeglasses in a factory somewhere and they don't sell the eyeglasses there, they then ship them to opticians who then sell them, then that's an industrial use. If the eyeglasses are being made in the back of the shop and then they sell the eyeglasses in the front of the shop, then that's a commercial use, a dispensary use with the accessory production in the back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson Peterson, did you have something to add to this part of the discussion?
Just wanted to ask clarification to the square footage in regards to the craft grower. The state initially sets what those square footages are, and as we heard, with the waves of licenses, depending on usage and depending on need, we may see the state expand the availability of them being able to increase the square footage of their operations.
At this point, the state has not put any square footage restrictions around the dispensaries?
Around the dispensaries? No.
Interesting. Okay, thank you. I had Councilmember Kelly next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Black, I think you've done a good job with your assignment, but I would like to just perhaps make a statement that's out of order. We'll see. The state law says that this can be done, and the only way that it can't be done inside a city is that a city would vote negatively to not allow sales within the city. A discussion along those lines would bring in important items of public health, of the effect on young men, the effect on children who ingest edibles. I'm not sure that we would still not approve sale within the city. Nevertheless, we're going forward with this without any discussion whatsoever of these negative, of some of these negatives. There's a lot of data out there from cities who have done what we're about to do. And we're not in a public way having a look at any of that data. We're just going forward. That bothers me. I'm not going to make a motion otherwise, but I think it's irresponsible of us not to have discussed any of these issues, which are serious issues. As I say, I suspect that we would pass it anyway, but I think these things need to be aired out in public, and I think we owe it to our citizens to do that. And we're not doing it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilmember Regenbach was next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a quick follow-up, Director Black, to Councilwoman Ali's questions on the cupcakes and infused products, just to make it clear, if we have a local bakery, they can't all of a sudden be selling cannabis-infused cupcakes unless they are a registered dispensary, correct?
Correct, absolutely, yes.
Because I think that's, as we hear the discussion or some of the naysayers talking about, we're going to be inundated with these dispensaries, let's go back to what the state law is. And Councilor Peterson, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there's three dispensaries that will be allowed in our five-county area. Is that correct?
The medical dispensary that the city already has within its limits would be allowed to apply for an early adult-use license. They would also be allowed to apply for one additional early adult-use license, so they could operate both our medical facility as well as two adult-use facilities. Until, I think it's March of 2020, there will only be three licenses available in our Bureau of Labor Statistic area. That's the first wave of '75, correct?
And that's five counties or...?
Five counties.
So, there'll be a total of three new dispensaries in a five-county area?
Yes.
With the first wave? So, I think that's really important that we keep that in mind and that the listening public hears that loud and clear. The other question I had as a follow-up to Councilman Monolongo, how did the warehouse district become the only form district to be included on this?
Simply because the warehouse district is different, both from a use standpoint and a physical development standpoint than the other form districts. So, the other form districts in town are West Main, the Sheridan Triangle and Prospect. And in looking at all of the form districts, we felt that, again, from a zoning standpoint, that the only form district that really would be appropriate for this mix of uses would be the warehouse form district. And part of that thought process is, as all of you will recall, unlike the rest of the city, within the form districts, there are no permitted uses and special uses. Everything is a permitted use. If it is allowed in a form district, then there is no requirement, in fact, there is no path to have to come to the city council to get approval to open something up because in the form districts, the primary concern is, as you would assume, the form of the development, what the buildings look like, what the development looks like, and much less about the uses that are happening within those buildings, which allows for a somewhat eclectic mix of uses that you wouldn't get in other areas. But it also means that there is a certain amount of control that is given up in terms of what uses can go into these areas. And in looking at all four of the form districts, we felt that the only one that we were comfortable recommending was the warehouse district.
And per the council communication and the Planning and Zoning Commission, there is no opposition expressed at the commission meeting last week from, you see, the developer month community in the warehouse district, there's...
There was...
To be no comments against that, correct?
Correct.
All right. I think the other thing, I'm just really pleased with the way this has come forward. And I think, going back to that Saturday morning when we spent here discussing this as a body and then the public meetings that were held, we've had a lot of great discussion on this. And I would even say, it goes back to my junior high speech class when Mrs. Ayers had us debating the value of whether or not marijuana should be legalized, and that was back in the '70s, if you will. So, I think the pros and cons have been debated for quite some time, and again, the proposal before us, I think, is, covers a lot of those concerns that have been raised. And looking at the experience we've had now with the medical dispensary, I think this is a very logical way to move forward. So, thank you for the efforts on it.
So, Director Black or Councilperson Peterson, maybe just for an additional clarification on this, because it seems like I'm getting a lot more questions about the secondary potential uses of, you know, the infusers and then where that market is going to be for, at retail. So, if I understand this correctly, if anybody is infusing the cannabis for sale at retail, that sale at retail can only happen if you have a dispensary license. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, in the city, it's not the entity that distributes the dispensary license, correct?
Correct.
So, those, the people that will try to get licensed to, you know, and that, at some point, I'm sure that the state knows that's going to happen, but it's not going to happen from the level of somebody's going to be able to buy commercial cannabis and take it to the corner cookie store and infuse it and sell it right there. It's not going to happen, at least not at the beginning, because they're not licensed to dispense cannabis infused or raw, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, I mean, a lot of this, while, not going to editorialize, because if I was in Springfield, I probably wouldn't have supported this, but they've already made that decision for us. But what I do appreciate is that Illinois, from, at least from my position, is rolling this out pretty slow. This isn't just going to be, okay, it's legal, go crazy. I mean, it's, you know, whether you think it's logical or not, it's measured. And I think that that's going to give us that opportunity. So, a lot of people that really think that there's going to be a pot brownie store on every corner, it's not, it's just not going to happen. The only place that they would be able to potentially buy an infused product would be in a state-licensed dispensary. Okay. I had Councilmember Ruckregel next.
Thank you, Mayor. And actually, my question kind of follows perfectly in line with that. In that same vein, if I'm reading right here, the difference really between the cultivation center and the craft grower are two things. Really, it comes down to the size of the operation, not the production, but necessarily the size of the actual operation. And with the craft grower, they can, if available, but of course, that would be regulated by the state and those are going to be limited, be tied to a dispensary, but that would be a secondary license that they would have to get. Just because they're a craft grower, they can't necessarily sell that product.
Correct.
Great. And just for clarification on that, with the 5,000-square-foot on the craft grower, if they would go to the state, if the state would grant them the license for the dispensary, is that a separate entity, operation, does that fall under the 5,000-square-foot for the craft grower? Are those two treated separately?
So, my understanding is that from the state license, there are two separate licenses, one for the craft grower operation, one for the dispensary operation. If someone obtained that license and assuming that the council adopts this, these sets of regulations or some similar zoning regulations, then they would also have to comply with local requirements. So, they may get a state license for a craft grower operation from the state and they plan on having 10,000 square feet, but if this is adopted, they would not be able to establish that within a commercial district in the city of Peoria.
Great, thank you.
And as a follow-up, a craft grower has to, their product has to be sold in a dispensary, right? So, they can't craft, grow it and then sell it out of their basement?
Correct.
Or storefront or wherever. Okay. Let me see who I had next. Councilman Euler is next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to clarify something I thought I understood from the policy session that we had on this, that the state of Illinois has greater restrictions on indoor tobacco use than on cannabis use. Is that correct?
Yes, Illinois is a smoke-free state.
But without that being addressed in regards to this, someone can smoke cannabis in a restaurant that they cannot tobacco, or how does that work?
The state has been very clear about where the areas that cannabis can be used are, and those are not public locations, so a restaurant would not count. The only time that a person could, in public, use the product would be if the city were to license and regulate businesses for onsite consumption.
So, that would have, regardless of what we're talking about right here, that conversation would have to come back to us to decide. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I had Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I wanted to get clarity on something you said earlier, that there are three licenses likely for the five-county area. Is that three additional licenses, including, I know we have a medical marijuana facility currently, so...
Those are separate from the early adult-use licenses. So, hypothetically, there could be two early adult-use licenses issued to our existing medical facility, and there is the potential that all three of the licenses for the dispensaries could potentially sit in Peoria, but those are competitive among the five-county area.
So, how many medical dispensaries do we have in the city of Peoria currently?
Just one.
Just one. And so, that dispensary could apply for recreational as well?
Yes.
And if that dispensary does apply and get awarded, then there will be two left?
No, they will be separate. There would still be three left. The existing medical cannabis facilities, so Trinity Compassionate Care, would have the ability to apply for an early adult-use license, and I believe those licenses are already out, and were the city to pass this, they could go ahead and apply for that license. The first wave also allows them to get a second early adult-use license. So, Trinity could potentially have two storefronts with both of those early adult-use licenses where they could... where they could sell adult recreational cannabis. The three licenses that will be issued by the state before the spring of 2020 are going to be separate and apart from that count.
Thank you. Councilmember Montalongo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify here, because I heard this a couple of times, so there's going to be three in five counties, 2020. I think the real question is what happens after that, the numbers that grow.
That you does set a number for the second wave, and I apologize, I don't know that number off the top of my head. As our district representative commented, some of that will be dependent on how much the market can absorb and how quickly the cultivation facilities can supply the product. So although the state has a second wave of licenses anticipated, there's no guarantee that they would necessarily issue those if, for example, the market simply doesn't sustain what's already existing.
I thought there was a number for the second wave.
The first wave for our five county region is three, and I apologize, I don't remember the number for the second wave off the top of my head.
Okay. And I guess to Director Black here, I think it would be important to get feedback from the warehouse district, investors, owners of properties there, to see what their feedback is, because I really see this could be a big concentration in one area that could change, could change what the warehouse district ends up being. And I think for those investors, they need to have some kind of feedback to the city council here on that. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm seeing no further lights for questions until Councilman Seer.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure everybody's got to get one round before I push the light again. Just a couple of questions for Councilor. Number one, five counties we're talking about, that equals one police district, is that correct? Okay, so do you have five, do we know how many medical cannabis businesses we have in those, in our police district or in the five counties?
Currently, there are two, including Peoria's.
So really, the first year, we're talking about five, then two plus the three possible licenses, right?
There's the potential for five.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further questions for staff? Or a motion to approve the first reading, receive and file the first reading, actually, Councilman Regenbach, seconded by Councilmember Moore? I'm seeing no further lights, please cast your ballots. The motion passes with nine ayes, one no. Councilmember Seer, Madam Clerk.
19-314 is a first reading review of an ordinance creating chapter, I'm sorry, Article 19, operation of a cannabis business of Chapter 18, licensing and miscellaneous business regulations of the Code of the City of Peoria.
This would be Council Peterson, I believe.
What you have before you is an ordinance that would create a business license for the cannabis-based businesses. The city does currently license other adult use businesses such as liquor, tobacco, and video gaming. This license would operate very similar to how the tobacco licenses operate for those cannabis-based businesses. It also allows the city to establish minimum distances between the cannabis-based businesses and the areas the city has deemed sensitive, which we have interpreted to mean schools and daycares based on the Act. This license, I want to be clear about a couple of things, does not authorize or at all suggest the council should, at this point, consider onsite consumption. It does place a placeholder, however, if you were to entertain that in the future, that this is the section in the code where that would go. It creates a licensing schedule for the businesses, and you can see that the cannabis craft growers would pay a licensing fee of $1,000, the cultivation centers would pay $5,000, the dispensing organizations would pay $2,500, the infusers and processors would pay $500. We did some research statewide to figure out what everybody else is charging for those licenses, and as Director Black just commented, we're sort of in the same place in the race as everybody else, so that information is hard to come by. Chicago's schedule is out there, though, and they charge substantially more for their cultivation center licenses, up to approximately $50,000. The dispensaries and craft growers are a sliding scale, up to, I think, $5,000 was the max, and it was based on the size of the facility. And then the rest of the businesses had a fairly low licensing fee, around $500, which is how we tried to come up with some numbers for ours as well. I think one important thing to note about this ordinance is, if you look at the definitions in it, they come directly from the state act. And I think this might clear up some of the confusion that there has been on processors versus infusers. And the way that the state has defined dispensing organizations, they clearly gave dispensing organizations the ability to sell products. None of the other organizations have the ability to retail sell the products. Craft growers and cultivation centers can sell to the dispensaries, others can sell to the dispensaries, but dispensaries are the only ones that have been, are allowed to sell these products. So as you look in the definition of dispensing organization, you'll see that it gives them the authority to sell cannabis-infused products. So the city zoning code is not what's going to prohibit a bakery from being standalone without a dispensary license, it's the state code that has established those definitions. As far as the minimum distance limitations go, we spent some time comparing the liquor code and the tobacco code, and came up with a recommendation of 500 feet between cannabis-based businesses and areas that involve childcare, or schools, or post-secondary education, or even areas where children may be for recreational purposes. And looking at other communities, I can tell you that Chicago has set their minimum distance location at 500 feet. Waukegan set theirs at 1,000 feet, and everybody else is discussing it either tonight or in the next couple of weeks, just like all of you. And with that, I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Seer first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was on the website for the state of Colorado this morning. I believe their minimum's 1,000 feet. Is that something that we're going to decide as a group, how many feet we want to be? Or is that 500, it's a done deal?
That was the staff recommendation, but it's the council's pleasure.
Okay. Are you aware that in Colorado State is 1,000 feet? Is that correct?
I believe it is 1,000 feet, but we also looked at the number of licenses in Colorado, didn't quite have the same restriction that Illinois had.
Okay. Somebody mentioned something earlier about the River City example. So you're talking about kids here, and daycare and schools. What about like a River City, where there's a lot of kids there, or parents that leave their kids? Would that be part of this recommendation?
We did consider that, and included a building or location used for education or recreation of minors. So we certainly were thinking about things like swim lessons and soccer games.
Should we be concerned, again, for safety here, ATMs and banks and/or medical centers, like prompt care centers, like that, should we be concerned about how close they are to those facilities?
Most of these businesses, or at least the dispensaries, actually operate with ATMs inside of them because they've been cash-only businesses. So the dispensaries that I visited either had an ATM inside the facility, or have had an ATM in the parking lot of the facility. As far as healthcare facilities or the hospitals, there are some that would certainly argue we should consider that, and then there are others that will argue that the dispensary should be considered no more than the pharmacy that's already sitting within the hospital grounds. So we tried to strike a balance between what we knew others were doing, what the liquor license would require, what the tobacco license would require, looking at what Colorado had done. And again, 500 was our minimum distance recommendation, but that's certainly up for discussion.
This is a first reading, correct? Okay, I'd really, I'd like to hear my colleagues about the 500 versus 1,000 feet. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I had Councilmember Ali next.
Thank you, Mayor Artis. Council, with regard to the 500 feet for schools, are licensed daycare home, would that be classified as a school?
I think it would, and that's an issue that Chicago is having right now, that they realized, once they looked at in-home licensed daycares, it really restricted where these businesses can go. And I think we may see in the trailer bill that actually be addressed.
Okay, thank you.
I had Councilmember Moore next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Was there any consideration when we were looking at minimum distances limitations to also include houses of worship?
We did not include that. That is not what the Act sort of suggested to us, because the Act only, for whatever reason, discussed colleges and universities as an area of sensitive concern and other educational places. We could certainly discuss that and consider including that, but that is not what the Act suggested to us.
But it's a suggestion, right?
Yes. That is completely within the city's authority to determine that limitation.
So unless it is prohibited, I'd like for us to look at adding houses of worship to this, to the minimum distance limitations. And when we're talking about minimum distances, if we move from 500 to 1,000, could you determine how that would impact the only medical cannabis dispensary that we have, if they decide to also apply for recreational, if they're already, would be knocked out of the running, if they are perhaps already under 1,000 feet from some of these locations? So that would be a negative business consequence for them, so I'd like for us to take a look at that as well.
Absolutely.
And then finally, there's been conversation that has come to me about the prohibitive nature the city would have if we required special uses for cannabis facilities. But the fact that we ask for site approval for liquor licenses is, in effect, this same type of thing. And so I would like, just as I would like to have control over where liquor license site approvals are determined, similarly, I would like to have oversight over where cannabis dispensaries are determined as well. And so I see those two things, liquor, tobacco, video gaming, and now cannabis, all being similar. So to those in the community who are concerned that the city is tying the hands of free-market enterprise to be able to go in wherever they want, well, we already limit where these other places can go, and this is in that same genre. And so I believe that it is appropriate that a special use is required. Thank you.
And I will tell you that staff debated that heavily, about how thorough the ordinance should be, should it look more like the liquor licensing, or should it look more like the tobacco licensing? And ultimately, I think the staff recommendation was, the state liquor code is very clear that it designates all of its authority to the local liquor commission on how to cite those places, how to regulate those places, to allow hours of operation and operating plans. The Cannabis Act really is the opposite as far as regulation goes. It maintained all of the regulation of cannabis and gave the municipalities or the local governments a teeny tiny sliver of authority. So that's why we did put this forward, looking more like tobacco licensing rather than the liquor licenses.
I had Councilmember Grab next.
On page four, we have a listing of fees for the various licenses, from the grower all the way down to the processor. Could we elaborate one more time on how we arrived at those rather modest fees?
Unfortunately, we don't have very good comparables, because everybody is doing the exact same thing. What we tried to do was scale and look at what Chicago was doing, and also compare it to what they're charging on the state level, and then reduce it proportionally.
Was there any thought that if these were too high, and let's say we wanted these in our community, that we would not be competitive in our five county area to securing some of these operations?
That is a concern. Without knowing what everyone else is looking at, we don't have the best information, however.
The other aspect that is interesting to me is Section 19-676. When we're talking liquor, we're usually talking about one of the roles of the mayor being the liquor commissioner. We're treating cannabis differently, and instead we have the, if there's a need for revocation, suspension, or fine, we have the city manager coming into play. Is there a reason for a change in how we're doing it for cannabis?
Yes, sir. The state liquor code specifically designates the mayor as the local liquor commissioner. If you look at the codes as to tobacco and video gaming, the city manager is actually the individual that would hold the revocation hearing for those other licenses.
And that's, it's different than for alcohol?
Yes.
And that's a state mandate, that it goes to city manager?
No, the state of Illinois mandates that the mayor serves as the local liquor commissioner.
Okay. Why are we doing city manager on this?
We looked at, for comparable purposes, who would hold a revocation hearing on video gaming or tobacco, as well as some other issues in the code, and designated the city manager as that person.
We don't have to do it that way.
Correct.
And I would just suggest that perhaps the council should consider if, for those of you interested in going forward with this, seems to me the elected official, the supreme elected official, should be involved in this. And I would just say also, this fine of not more than $1,000, where did we get that? I could think of a situation where we'd want it to be a heck of a lot more than $1,000 if they can't operate in accord with our rules.
We looked at the fines for a similar tobacco violation or a video gaming violation.
Perhaps we should, if we are in a straitjacket because of those fine structures, maybe we are, maybe we aren't. Are we in a straitjacket? We can't change this? Or can we change the whole thing across the board to allow for higher fines as the elected body here in the city of Peoria?
We could look at those, yes.
You know, $1,000 for a violation in so many of the areas where people are given licenses is nothing. Manager, you're well aware of some of the absolute abuse we've had in rules in District Two. Over and over and over again, we're giving tickets to no avail. I'll tell you what, if we don't have something with some teeth in it, I don't know who in this body should be citing on anything. $1,000 is a joke. When we're talking about tobacco, for that matter, it doesn't have to be cannabis, we need to really take a look at that. And I think we should take a look at whether or not it should be the elected official or the city manager. I think it should line up with how we do alcohol, unless we're prohibited to do otherwise. Manager, I'm not trying to take any powers away from you, you have enough worries, but I'm just thinking, you know, it makes more sense for, like, if the mayor, that's one of the jobs of the mayor, is to oversee the most powerful and the most destructive drug in the world called alcohol, okay? In terms of lives that it impacts and destroys. If we're given that responsibility to the mayor, then, you know, some We're given that responsibility to the mayor, then, you know, something like cannabis should probably also be in her or in his domain as well, whoever the mayor is. So, and it's not specific to Artis or to Uric or anything, I'm looking down the road. So these would be some of the things, some of the thoughts that I would have on this, Counselor, this first reading.
Thank you. I had Councilmember Kelly next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, did you consider the, in the proximity, in the, did you consider parks?
Yes, we included recreation areas.
Okay, and, okay. And did you give any thought, perhaps outside the warehouse district, to proximity, within the proper zoning area, proximity to residential areas?
And there's a specific reason for that. The state of Illinois will only allow us to set a minimum distance area for a, what they called a sensitive area in the statute. And by that, they meant churches, we think, schools, areas where you expect children to be. What the Act actually said was colleges and universities, and I'm not sure why they started with that, I would have probably started with kindergarten, but they started with colleges and universities. The Act does not give us the authority to establish a minimum distance location to a residential area unless there's something about it that we would define as a sensitive area.
Children.
Areas where children are--
A lot of children live in residential areas.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I mean, do you feel constrained in taking into account, under the statute, residential areas?
Yes. I think the statute was specific. They gave us limited authority to set a minimum distance location to a residential area. And if the city were to adopt a minimum distance limitation that included all residential areas, or was so high that it prohibited a business from citing within the city, the state would probably find us in violation of our authority.
Well, I'm not talking about that, you know? I know this is going to happen. I'm just thinking, outside the warehouse district, because I guess it's, you know, citing in a properly zoned area that's fairly close to a residential area where, you know, there are children, you feel that that would not pass muster?
I do not. I believe the state was specific that sensitive areas, which is areas where children are going to congregate, so schools, playgrounds, parks, daycares, can be included. But if we were to broaden the definition so greatly that it included any area where a child could potentially ever be, so a residential home or a shopping center, I don't think that would pass muster.
Okay, thank you. And I would also like to second the motion on churches as well. Thank you.
And maybe in that regard, Counsel, we can try to mirror the liquor code in terms of proximity to all of the areas that the liquor code already addresses that on. Just see what that looks like. Councilmember Ali was next.
Thank you, Mayor Artis. Counsel, back to this 500 feet between businesses and schools, if the council chose, we could make a distinction between schools and businesses, right? I mean, we could say 500 feet for businesses, and we could say 800 or 1,000 feet for schools if we chose. Isn't that correct?
Well, this is not necessarily applicable to all businesses. This is only going to be areas that fall under this definition of collectively, we refer to it as schools in the code. So the state statute has some minimum distance locations that have to be the distance between where the dispensaries, for example, can be located, or the dispensary and a processor, for example. This is simply where the retail sales can be, or any of the other cannabis businesses in a sensitive area.
Okay. But couldn't we set a different minimum for businesses than we have for schools?
Do you mean the cannabis-based businesses?
Yes.
No, the state has completely occupied that field by defining specifically what that minimum distance location between the cannabis businesses have to be.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Montalongo is next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to voice my opinion. I think 1,000 feet should be more in line with what the number is, distance away. Thank you.
I'd also like to echo Councilman Grab's concern on the fining. I think we need to address the fine. And I would also like to address the license fees. Frankly, I think, I mean, we're looking at, I think I saw something we were estimating, potential first-year sales in the limited capacity they're going to be here is, you know, maybe $300,000, just because it's a limited, is that right, on the income side? So I'm not shy about saying, I think $1,000 for a craft grower, or even the $5,000 for a cultivation center, or 2,500. I'd like to look at all three of those. I mean, we're looking at serious income opportunities for the owners, and I think that the city should not gouge, but I think that we should set an appropriate fee. There's going to be cost to the city to regulate and monitor these things, so I think we should have a, you know, I think we should take a little bit harder look at that. I mean, I know it's the first year, we can always adjust it afterwards, but I think we're starting on the low end. Councilmember Moore?
And to your point, Mr. Mayor, with this being the first year, and the high amount to enter this field, we talked about the additional taxes that are going to be levied on top of any sales, and it's going to be at least several hundred thousands of dollars even to get into this industry. I can see us looking at an increased license if we are able to monitor the, I don't know if we have any control or be able to monitor the amount of sales that they have, and perhaps that license is then predicated on the amount of sales. Yes, we can look at it differently the next year, but I'd like for us to kind of pay attention to what the barrier to entry will be, and especially when we're talking about, as part of this Act that's coming down from the state, we have this equity component, and financing for any business is going to be a concern. But then when you talk about the equity component, then you're talking about a higher penalty, if you will. I hate using that word, but in essence, the amount to enter this production or cultivation or dispensary is going to be several hundred thousands of dollars. And I do agree that if there was a, when you're talking about a fine, $1,000 doesn't sound like a lot, but it depends on what the infraction was. If I'm going to spend 200, 300, or 400,000 to enter a business venture, you better believe I'm going to have my people trained. But if something, some minor snafu happens that was self-inflicted, didn't harm anybody, it was maybe somebody came in and something was out of line, I think that's different than you actually intentionally sold to a miner, like we, with a liquor license, with someone having a liquor license, a miner going into a tavern and being served, that's a major concern. This is a little, so I'd like for us just to, as we're deciding how we're going to craft this, to not be so overburdened with fees and licenses, and we should have those, absolutely. And they should cost something, absolutely. But if it's going to cost 200, 300, or 400,000 to get into this business, just as you said, Mayor, after the first year, if we find that, you know, the amount that is set is too low, then maybe we're at the Chicago rate of 50,000 from that point forward. But I just want us to not push too fast, to heap a lot of cost on what is already going to be a costly entry into this field. I don't have a number that I'm going to throw out, but just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Okay. So we're talking about two things, just hypothetical in the first reading, which we'll come back with recommendations. So one of them was the license fee, and I would imagine, and if you get one of these in the city of Chicago, there'll probably be a lot of people that would be willing to pay 50,000 for that. You know, we're asking for 2,500 for a dispensary. All I'm saying is, I think there's room on that one. The other part was the fines structure. The, what's in front of us actually says a fine not more than 1,000. It sets the ceiling at 1,000, and all I'm saying is, and I'm sure regardless of who we've determined will be the hearing officer for this, I think that they should be given more leeway on the ceiling side, not, it's not a mandatory minimum or something like that. Thank you. I had Councilmember Grab next.
Well, and that's exactly right, because part of Section 19-676 talks about a licensee knowingly furnishing false or misleading information, or withholding relevant information or any application, on any application for a license. And that's pretty serious business, I would say. So I think the idea of putting a straitjacket of no more than a $1,000 fine for whoever's doing this, whether it be the mayor or the city manager, is ludicrous. And we've seen some of the jinx that goes on in the city of Peoria as relates to folks who have held liquor licenses, and I say "have" held, and situations where we've had to put a plan of operation on a business that ends up being a nuisance business for the entire neighborhood or the stretch that it's located in. So, you know, I would certainly say that that's why we have, that's why it's important, who occupies this position, and who can make decisions based on the track record of the person holding the license. So I would be opposed to putting a straitjacket of $1,000 on what could be very serious infractions.
Thank you.
I think the other part of it was, and I can't remember which council member mentioned it, but, and maybe it's because we don't really know yet, but someone mentioned potential site approval. It mirrors what we do for liquor. I mean, so I'd like to find out a little bit more about how, I understand that we can't interfere with the state, but if there is an opportunity for us to put a site approval process, even if it's zoned correctly, I would be interested to see if we potentially had the authority to do that.
Okay.
Thank you. Who did I have next? I had Councilmember Recreel next.
Thank you, Mayor. When we come to the fines, I think, again, not to echo several times what I think we've heard around here, but the $1,000 really does not sound like a harsh enough penalty when we're talking about, really, if something goes awry. Because, City Manager, these are extremely regulated businesses, correct?
Yes, sir.
And there's a lot of training that goes into these businesses opening, and a lot of inspections throughout the period. So if somebody's in violation, it's not going to be a minor violation, it's going to be a much more egregious violation, correct?
Well, I would imagine in most instances, most of the regulation of these facilities is handled by the state. So, I mean, I think what we've tried to do is simply put some language in here that referenced some of the requirements that we would normally have in many of our licensing ordinances.
And seeing that we're talking about a multiple of different license types, craft grower, infuser, all of these multiple layers where the economies of revenue could actually be extremely large, I just, I think, to echo again what I've heard around the council, $1,000 seems to be a very limiting factor, especially to the scale of businesses that some of these could be.
I had Councilman Kelly next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a difference, of course, there's a difference that we all are aware of between licenses and penalties, that is fines, I'm sorry, not penalties, they're all penalties. But licenses and fines, and I agree that fines, the, whether it's the mayor or the city, or the manager, they should have some discretion, but the possibility of fines going considerably higher, I think, is proper. I'm a little concerned about the licenses. I'd just soon give them away, but I know that's not possible. But let us not get into this cash cow business that we're in with landlords, et cetera. This is a business that's easy to pick on, and it's not a business that I care for. Nevertheless, it's a business that's easy to pick on, and so we're going to jam it to them on licenses. And I would just as soon not do that like we do with landlords. Let's give them some sort of reasonable license fee, but on the fines side, if they're in violation of things, yes, let's have a lot more discretion on the upside. Also, I forgot to mention in my last remarks that I agree with Councilman Seer on 1,000 feet.
I had Councilmember Jensen next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize for being late. I was attending my son's senior night at Richwoods High School for soccer, so, but I was listening for the last half hour or so, so I just wanted to add a couple of things. I do support the higher feet requirement that I know Councilman Seer suggested, and I think Councilman Kelly may have mentioned as well. I think that we should have a farther distance from schools, daycare facilities, and even maybe a farther distance from colleges and universities. And I know I heard, I can't see her, but Counselor, is she here? I can't see you over the podium, talk about the residential requirement, and not being able to limit distances from residential buildings, but I do have concerns about having these businesses that close to residences. I know the proposal is not to permit them in residential districts, that's correct, right? But I'm concerned about when you have a residential building that's been grandfathered in, that might be in another district. So I would like to see if we could explore that, or see if Assistant Corporation Council has an opinion on whether we could put some kind of limitations on those exceptions when you have residential buildings in non-residential districts.
Stand up, so I can see you.
Thank you.
I think, if I understood your question, you want to know if we can, as part of the minimum distance requirement, add something that would exempt out grandfathered residential homes in business districts?
It's, I don't know, like, for instance, there's one on the near north side, there's a couple residential buildings that are grandfathered into a commercial area, and I think there's also other places like that in the city. And you don't have to answer this right now, but it's something to look at.
We'll look into it, but I will go back to, the state statute was very narrow in what it gave us the authority to do, and that was to regulate the distance between cannabis-based businesses and areas it deemed sensitive, starting with colleges and universities, and then the interpretation is that should apply to all schools or areas where children should congregate. I don't think the interpretation would extend to including all residential areas. I think if there's perhaps a way we could-- I think if there's perhaps a way we could maybe look at that again with the zoning code, we could, but from a business licensing perspective, that's not an exemption we make really in the liquor code, or, you know, for tobacco or video gaming, so it would be difficult to justify here.
Okay. But we could look into it perhaps for the, the zoning part of it, which was the earlier item?
Take a look at that, of course.
And if I may, I mean, I'd like, I don't know if this was discussed when you talked about the zoning part, but to put a cap, and I don't know if you do that in the license part, or if you do it in the zoning part, but I'd like to see us put a limit on the number of the different types of businesses. I'm not sure what that number would be, and I understand that under the state law, there's only the potential for three more licenses for dispensaries at this point, but I would like to have a cap. I don't want us, you know, to have these businesses all over the city. I think we should have a cap maybe at five for the city, or maybe a limit per district. I also would like to have a limitation between the distance between each cannabis business, which I think was discussed a little bit, from what I heard. You know, I don't want us, to see us, I know we've had this discussion when we, when we did the medical marijuana licensing several years ago, we talked about putting limitations on the numbers that we permitted. We've talked about it with the cash currency exchanges and the, the fast cash loans, you know, like on university, we have them all in one spot, and they're all right next to each other, and we finally limited those. But I'd like to see us get ahead of the game and limit the number that we have in, in each district and in the city as a whole.
I'm not sure, and I'll ask council to add in on this one, but part of the discussion earlier was, is that the state isn't allowing us to be more restrictive. But I don't know if it's Council Lice or Council Peterson, I don't, I'm not saying I would disagree with you, it seems like they're handcuffing us in that area.
As, as Mr. Peterson said earlier, we have to be real careful with any sort of restriction that we put on top of what the state has already provided to us, because the state has occupied the field, and, and as Ms. Peterson indicated, it's different than liquor control, where the, the cities were given wide latitude. Here, the state said, we're occupying the field, and we're not going to allow cities to change essentially what we have drafted in the legislature. I mean, the only thing that we have, that we can do is say we don't want any recreational use, but we have to be real careful that we're not otherwise trying to infringe upon what the state has, has set forth a statutory scheme.
And, and I understand that, but with all due respect, we can put a limitation on the number of dispensaries, and the other, and the number of cultivation centers, the number of craft growers, we can put a limit on the number that we allow in our city that would not violate anything in the state statute.
I'm not sure that I agree with, with you on that point.
Again, standing up so I can see you. We'll take a look at that. I, I think that that's an issue that a lot of communities are struggling with, and nobody's entirely sure what the answer is right now. On the liquor side, we certainly have communities throughout Illinois that have limited the number of licenses for certain types of liquor license holders. But again, you weren't here for the prior discussion, but again, the state has designated all of that authority to be dealt with locally. So let us take a look and see what some, maybe some other communities are having that discussion about, and if we feel like we could make that recommendation for that to be a, a good, something that would be upheld if challenged. As far as limiting the number per district, I would be concerned about going down that route, because the state has identified certain parts of Peoria to where social equity applicants could receive those benefits, and it would not apply equally throughout all of the districts. And so we could be trying, in an area where actually that is exactly where the state is telling us that they should, in fact, be located.
And, and that's a good, I didn't think of that. Another option would be to maybe limit the number in C1 districts, or, you know, if we allow it, a special use in C1, C2, and CG, if we only allow a certain amount within commercial districts, and a certain amount in warehouse district, and a certain amount in industrial districts, is another thought. Let me just make sure if I have anything else. I guess that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Any additional input on the first reading? Seeing no lights, would entertain a motion to receive and file on the first reading. Councilmember Ali, seconded by Councilmember Ruckregal. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes with ten ayes, one nay, voting no. Councilmember Seer, Madam Clerk.
Regular Business 19-315 is a request to accept the low bid of Illinois Civil Contractors and award a construction contract in an amount not to exceed $150,000 from the base bid of $72,802 for the concrete repairs contract for 2019.
Okay. We have Director Powers here, if you would like to give us a brief overview of this. Mr. Director?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just thought you might want to give us a brief overview of this agenda item.
This was a base bid.
Make sure that one's on. It, you're, you're hot, but your switch has to be on.
Counsel, and I can't turn the mic on. Thanks. This was a base bid of $72,802, which ended up being $150,000, because of basically, we found more work to do. I could outline that for you, but a lot of you see it in your districts, and I can't say that it consists basically of work on Allen Road Bike Path, retaining wall repair of about $20,000, ADA ramps at Fulton and Monroe for about $30,000, sidewalk on Folgers Avenue about $25,000, speed humps at three various locations of about $30,000, sidewalk repair on Manchester at $5,000, sidewalk and bike path repair on Wilhelm Road at 10K, and then a crosswalk on Allen Road South around about $25,000. We have two other locations that could come in between 20 and 40,000 as well.
Okay.
And it's a little late in the year, so we're up against December trying to get this done as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director, as to, in the third paragraph, fourth sentence and midway, it reads, "The company proposes to utilize 5% MBEs for trucking and 11% WBEs for landscaping and traffic control." Am I to understand that there's only part of this project, there's only 5% of trucking as part of this project?
No, it looks like a 5% MBEs for trucking, but across, but they're going to try to attain more across the board on all the projects, and some of the projects are completely unknown.
So the percentage used for trucking could be more than 5%, but they're going to try to use 5% for MBEs.
They're going to try to attain a higher percentage overall.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
They're going to try to attain a higher percentage overall, period. We actually sat down.
So when we're talking about trucking, landscaping, and traffic control, where will this company, or any company coming through Public Works, find information out about these minority companies? Will they be coming to the city of Peoria's website, using ePrism Soft? And the reason I ask is because when we did, you weren't here for this, but when we did the MacArthur Street Bridge project, there was quite a bit of trucking on that, and there were no minority truckers on that project, and although there, there are at least two and possibly three minority truckers in the first district. And so I just want to make sure that, and, and at least one of those was on the city's website, is in Prism Soft, and apparently he couldn't be found. And so I'm concerned that we find these individuals, if I know of three off the top of my head, there's probably more out there, and two of those three I know for a fact are MBEs. And so I would be very interested when this project closes to see which of those contractors' MBEs were used on these projects. And, and it may be some other MBEs that I'm not aware of. I'm not saying the, the ones that I'm thinking of should be actually used, but I would like to start when these projects close to actually see who was used, the company, the name of the companies, to make sure that it is actually happening the way it needs to happen. I do believe there are landscaping MBEs out there as well. There may be, I'm not aware of any WBE landscaping companies, but I'm sure they're out there. That's one question. The, my, another question, so, I'm sorry, can I get a commitment that when this project closes, we, I can see who the contractors were on the project?
Yes.
Thank you. And in fact, anytime, I would like to also request that anytime something comes to us that, that remarks about minority participation, and I, and I will have to say, I'm very happy with the way this is outlined, because when I first started talking about minority participation in contracts, it was maybe a sentence, and now it's very detailed, and, and I like seeing that, but I would like seeing more it actually happening on the back end. And so on to the second page, or the third page, the, the chart that you have, where you have the red dot and the green dots, are those the areas that are proposed for this work?
Yes, that's some of the areas. That is not all-inclusive. Again, keeping in mind that the base bid was $72,000, excuse me, $72,802, and came in at $150,000.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I said the base bid we were requesting was $72,802. The actual bid came in at $150,000. So there's additional work we're considering if we can get it in before December. That is our goal, to try to do as much of that $150,000 as plausible.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay. Councilman Grayab.
Well, I, I don't think District Two is much different from the rest of the city, but we're crying out for sidewalk in need of repair, work to be done, and traffic calming to be done. And I'm just curious, Director, why, because I note, impact if approved on the memo, concrete repairs will be constructed and completed within reasonable time before winter weather affects construction costs. Is this late for this to be brought forward, for this request for approval of expenditure?
It is, and I, again, arriving midpoint in this, I think some of it was the very point that Councilmore brought up, that we were trying to do due diligence relative to the bid, which took time.
Well, gosh, we're, we're already into October, and we have 34, 37 degree weather. I hope next year, this is not replicated, that we can get together the kind of information that my colleague is requesting, which seems to be entirely reasonable, but that we get, get it going quicker, because everything's running late this year. Manager, I don't know if you have any thoughts on why that's the case? Do you have any thoughts as to why we're running so late this year?
Well, I think that part of the reason, Councilman, was we worked back and tried to make sure that we had the minority participation right. It's taken us some time to work with the contractors to, to get that work done. I think the, the first proposal went out, and they were looking at a larger scope of work to do this work. We're, we're trying to move it as quickly as we can, and, and we'll certainly, as we get into next year, look at how we can expedite the, some of the capital projects and move them up a little bit faster in the year.
Well, certainly, you know, as the city of Peoria, we are interested in providing equality of opportunity. We cannot mandate a number, and we can't hold up progress in the city and jobs to do this infrastructure work for reasons of the sort you're describing. So we need to pick up the speed. As, I'll tell you what, where I go in District Two, I, I don't know about the other district council people, but we've been waiting for some of these infrastructure improvements now for months. By the way, I don't want to pick too much on the city of Peoria, but talking to some of our state lawmakers, they, they're way behind on an infrastructure bill for the state. How long have we been talking about fixing the infrastructure up in, in our state? It looks like it's being tied up. So, you know, it gets a little old when people have to tolerate some of the decrepit infrastructure that we have in our city, when people are trying to do sidewalk in need of repair, when they're trying to calm traffic down that's whizzing through our neighborhoods. So, Director Powers, you're, you're new here to Peoria. Hopefully next year, you can be sure we, we are moving at a quicker clip than, than we have this, this year. Thank you.
Any additional questions on this item, or I entertain a motion to approve? Councilman Seer, seconded by Councilmember Ali. Please cast your ballots. And the motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
19-316 is a request to adopt an ordinance approving the Curious Nomad LLC redevelopment agreement at 807 Southwest Adams.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move for approval with comment on the other side.
Okay. Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Regenbach. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. So this is a, many of you may recognize this address, 807 Southwest Adams, as the address of a, of a business that had some challenges, and it has subsequently closed, and now the building has been purchased by two individuals, a husband and wife team, that plans to come in and do something quite unique. It's a DIY kind of craft business, and so those of us who are, you know, like to watch HGTV and see all the manner of things to be done, this is what's going to be happening there. Jody, who is, is Cliff's wife, is the person who will be running that part of the business, and to this business, they will be asking for a site approval to, because it's DIY and, and drinks on the side. So, for example, if, if there was a men's group who wanted to go there and make something with their hands and have a, a little drink on the side, they would be able to do that. And so Cliff, I believe Cliff and Jody are here, yes? And if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to give them a couple of minutes just to explain their concept, and give privilege to the floor.
Sure. Seeing no objections from the council, welcome.
My name is Cliff Viera, this is my wife, Jody Viera. We have never done this before, so, excuse me for lacking formalities, but we appreciate the opportunity to speak, and thank you, Ms. Moore, Councilwoman Moore, for speaking on our behalf. But, yeah, we're really excited about bringing something fun and exciting and an experience-based thing that's unique to Peoria. We've seen this sort of concept in other larger cities. We've seen great renovations and revitalization of warehouse districts, which is what we are really appealed to here. And so we're, we're looking forward to moving forward on this and bringing some of the projects here. So my wife is the, the accountant and the designer. They've worked very well together in this case, and, and she's got a great business plan here that we're going to take, take forward. So we will also convert the upstairs into a three-bedroom apartment, so there'll be sort of mixed use, but it'll all blend in very well with what we all hope the warehouse district to continue to grow into.
Okay.
I will say that when you look at the development agreement that they've, Mr. Suarez has, has helped them prepare, it is taking into consideration that the Cliff and, and Jody are highly leveraged with their own funds in this project. And that's what we like to see, that the, the owners of the property and the business are, have the first dollar in, and are highly leveraged in this project. So I thank you, Jody, for coming. They have two children, did you bring the kids with you today?
No, we have our kids.
Not tonight? Okay. But I was able to go through the building with Cliff, and he helped me down the stairs, because I have this vertical thing happening sometimes. But what they're going to be doing on the second level, it is, it is as raw as raw can get. I mean, they, they're going to have to, it's already been partially gutted, but it looks like the Flintstones lived up there at some point. The first level is, is almost ready to go. Not, a whole lot needs to be done there, but then they're also looking at perhaps doings, in fact, they will be opening up the front entry to bring more light into the building. It's a, it's a small footprint, but it has a lot of potential, and has beautiful windows upstairs that they're going to have there. Is there anything else you'd like to? Is there anything else you'd like to add, Jody or Cliff? Well, thank you. Mr. Suarez, is there anything that you'd like to add regarding the developmental agreement?
Well, just briefly, I would just like to characterize this as a small-scale development project. And as a result, you'll find out that when you look at the financials, it really does two rental income units. And so it creates quite a challenge when you look at the development process and the potential for leasing and of course, re-leasing the facility. So before you is really the incentive package that we provided. It's going to be five years at seventy-five percent reimbursement and five years thereafter at fifty percent. There's also a need to move, if you look at your packages, you'll see that the facade itself is really in need of great tender care, especially with the removal and the relocation of utilities from the front. For without that, you really couldn't get the kind of image you see here on this rendering. It's also in your package as well. So we're now looking, we're looking to really improve the look of the downtown, but certainly the operation itself will bring a lot of life. And we're always looking to do that to our warehouse district and throughout the city is making it an inviting place. And I think this project really is a great turnaround for this building as well as bringing great excitement to our downtown. So it's an exciting project.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Finally, I'd like to say, these are the kind, this is the kind of couple we like seeing, young vibrant color couples, bringing life and vitality to our warehouse district. We talked earlier about the Peoria Innovation Alliance and the Innovation District. And I contend, this is what is all of this, this has all been about, is bringing forth young people with new ideas and new types of businesses. And I would ask for your approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff or the project? Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do support the project. I love to see this type of investment. So thank you for coming forward with this. I do have a question for you, Mr. Suarez, about the initial disbursement of eleven thousand dollars for 2020.
Yes.
That's part of the proposal. Is that, will that come, what kind of tax money are we getting right now?
It will be drawn from the actual warehouse TIF redevelopment fund.
Okay.
And that is the initial pull we have, but that'll be a reimbursement after the relocation is done on their dime, and then we would then reimburse them immediately thereafter in the year 2020.
Okay, so even though the plan is to reimburse them, that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Initial disbursement after it's as a reimbursement, and then annually, there'll be annual reimbursements as well as based on the increment that we receive from the total project and property tax.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I had Councilmember Seer next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just got a couple of questions for our city managers, really more to educate myself than anything else. I think this is a great project, but the two and a half years I've been here, is it usually fifty percent reimbursement for a TIF?
Generally, for redevelopment agreements, it is fifty percent. Fifty-fifty has been our standard agreement. We've had other agreements where we've just based upon the cash flow needs of the developers, we've fronted monies to allow them to get some work done and then adjusted the percentages on the back end. Depending on the, how big of an impact the development was going to have, there might be a little more TIF increment that's utilized. But generally, we start at that fifty-fifty split.
So these types of development are great for the city, but are we opening a door here to future development where they'll need or ask for seventy-five percent? And do you see that as a problem or it's not going to be a problem?
I think it comes on a case-by-case basis within each one of the TIFs.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on this item? We have a motion in a second. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Best of luck on your project. Madam Clerk.
Nineteen dash three seventeen is a request to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter Twenty of the Code of the City of Peoria by deleting Section Twenty dash one-one-two pertaining to possession of cannabis or drug paraphernalia.
Council Peterson.
In 2016, the state of Illinois began allowing local units of government to prosecute small cannabis possession charges, so ten grams or less. And subsequent to that, the city adopted an ordinance that put into effect what we've called Cannabis Court for the last few years. So tickets that have been issued for possession of ten grams or less have been dealt with administratively through a hearing officer here at City Hall rather than in the Circuit Court. Anything over that amount has been dealt with in the Circuit Court written as a state ticket. Now, the new law that will go into effect January first, because it allows possession of up to thirty grams, somewhat nullifies the ordinance that we have. So we're asking to delete Section Twenty dash one-twelve of the current code, which is the ordinance that the city passed in 2016. This doesn't prevent the police department from writing tickets or prosecuting tickets in relation to possession of cannabis. Anything that is in excess of thirty grams, so what would be in violation of the Recreational Act, could still be written under a state code and prosecuted by the state's attorney. What the city could decide to do is retain the administrative system, but because recreational use will be legal for those over twenty-one, it would only be in effect for those between eighteen and twenty-one. And so that is probably not an efficient way to run an administrative court. It would cost you more than the tickets would actually generate because you would have very few tickets written for that particular age sector. So we would ask that you perhaps entertain a motion tonight to dispense with the first reading and pass this this evening so that we can make sure we are in compliance with state law before our January one deadline.
Okay. Councilmember Jensen.
I move to suspend the rules so that we can waive the first reading and adopt this recommendation.
Okay, sir, seconded, seconded by Councilmember Euler. Seeing no lights. Please cast your ballots. And the motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Do we need to move to adopt that ordinance then? Or?
That was kind of all, I guess you made that in one motion. So do you want to use that as a motion to suspend? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
We have a motion to suspend it and seconded that passed. Now we'll have a motion to approve. Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal, and we'll vote on that. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. A little cleaner that way.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Nineteen dash three eighteen is a request to receive and file a presentation and discussion of the 2020 to 2021 biennial budget. And you have a binder on your desk.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is going to be an extremely brief presentation on the budget. You have in front of you, you do have your budget book. You just received it this evening, and that's the reason why it's going to be extremely brief. You know, staff has worked really hard over the last several months to try and align a proposed spending plan with the council's priorities. You have a balanced budget in this document. There is no property tax increase. There are no layoffs, and we're putting one point four million dollars back into the general fund next year. So I just want to lay that out first. You'll have the opportunity to dig into it. Just quickly, what's in the book? Section one is the budget summary that just lays out all of the financial tables, the transmittal, the budget in brief. And then we talk about the planning process that we utilized in putting this together. We have a section on the community feedback from the public budget meetings that we had and the public outreach that we've done. And then we jump into talking about how we've aligned this for the budgeting for outcomes. The second section of the book really just has the department-level budget summary, so you'll see at the department level what the funding is. And then the largest section of the book is the community investment plan, the capital improvement projects. The last two sections are really just the slides that we have and the appendices from the community input section. So all of that's laid out for you. We'll have that, we'll be posting this out to our web in the morning for you, so we'll have that out there as well. From a calendar standpoint, is really what I wanted to just close with. Until we adopt the budget, we'd like to plan on having meetings every Tuesday night from here until probably mid-November. We've laid out that next Tuesday, we would come in and I'll give a more full presentation about what's in this budget book after you've had a chance to read it and digest some. And I'll, obviously, if you have any questions during the week, we'll be happy to answer them. We'll have that estimated property tax levy to the council on October fifteenth. On October eighteenth, we'll publish the truth and taxation hearing, if necessary, right now. It wouldn't be necessary because our property tax levy is actually going down. October twenty-second, we'll have the public hearing for the budget and continue the budget deliberations. October twenty-ninth, we'll continue those conversations and hopefully wrap everything up by November fifth so that we can have the council adopt it on November twelfth. And with that, if there's any kind of housekeeping questions or procedural questions, I'd be happy to answer any. I think obviously, next week, we'll get into the substance.
And just for the listening public, we were just handed the proposal from the manager this evening. So we have some reading to do, and that's, tonight's a receive and file. The actual budget process starts next Tuesday night, special meeting. Councilmember Seer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Manager, what kind of feedback have we received from the constituent on the website?
I think that we had over six hundred and thirty people took the budget challenge. So we, you'll have, there's a summary in this book of the sentiment that they had. I think we had over fifty people in attendance at the two public budget meetings that we held earlier this year. We've had a working committee with some private citizens where we've been sitting down and talking through some budget initiatives with them or some concepts with them. And so I think all of that, we tried to encapsulate into that report so that you can read it. Generally, I think that people are looking at the city's budget and recognizing that there's no easy answers to a lot of the questions that we're facing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Grab.
Manager, what impact would an EPA settlement have on these numbers?
We built into this budget an assumption that the EPA settlement started, so, and as we have done over the last couple of years. So if there isn't a settlement, just like we've done in the last couple of years, we won't issue any bonds or spend any money to that effect in that regard.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
So my comment would be, thank you for the, I mean, the devil's in the details and we have a lot of digging to do, but starting at a place with no tax increases, especially property tax increases, I'm sure the public is going to be glad to hear that. I didn't hear anything about reductions in workforce, especially public safety. And we're putting some money in reserve, which we're working towards our goal from a policy standpoint. So good place to start. I know we're going to, there's going to be a lot of additional discussion, but from a presentation of a first start, that's a good place to start, having some leeway there. So unless there's any other questions, we're just, this is just a receive and file item this evening. Councilmember Seer, seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal. Seeing no further lights, for comments, please cast your ballots. And that motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We're at unfinished business?
Any unfinished business tonight, unfinished business? Councilmember Moore.
Mayor, I believe we have a two or three-minute overview of our communications strategy from Stacy Peterson, who, if you recall, we are looking at bringing forward to our public access channel, a communication method whereby we can get information out to the community on an ongoing basis. And Stacy has been working all year to try to find a process, a program, and she's talked to other communities, and so she's going to give us an update. Stacy, thank you.
And thank you for your prompting and getting this done. This really has been through the encouragement of Councilmember Moore. We're trying to make our public access channel more robust. As it currently stands, we try to feed that channel with content that we've created from public meetings. It always shows our council meetings. And then when we have special events like Great Neighbor Appreciation Week, or episodic meetings on the budget, or the adult-use cannabis, we make sure that we create content so we have some kind of feed going. But it really isn't enough because when we don't have programming going, it defaults to the arts channel, which is a free channel. We don't have any kind of trademarking issues with it, but it allows us to show that to the public. It's terrific, but we're missing some really key opportunities to connect with the residents and let them know what's going on at the city level. So we did a little bit of research, and we found that there were several communities using a program called Tightrope Software, which actually speaks with our broadcasting channel. Now, an important thing to note is that funding for our public access channel comes out of PEG fees, and these PEG fees are negotiated through our cable company. Most recently, I think about three years ago, we renegotiated our contract with Comcast. And every person who gets this Comcast cable bill gets charged a tiny amount of PEG fees with the designation of going to public access and public access only. And in the state of Illinois, we are not allowed to use that PEG fee for any kind of personnel costs, but we can use it for hard costs, equipment replacement, software. So out of this fund, we found this software at a cost of eighteen hundred dollars, and we had it installed. And now the next thing that we have to do is just learn how to use it. It provides us with a lot of capabilities. It can actually link up to our website. We can run a crawl on it. We can put more content in it. We can link it to our social media feeds so it sees what's going on in real time. And we're hoping to get this done. There'll be a little bit of a learning curve because I haven't looked at all of it yet, but I've worked with a couple of different communities, both in Iowa City and in Champaign-Urbana, because they have very, very robust public access channels, kind of something that we would aspire to, where you actually have the public coming in and creating content. But they also use this software. So rather than using some of our free help hours that are banked with this software purchase, I think that we can do a little best practices and learn from these neighboring communities and learn some best practices there. So I would say, in our discussion, Councilmember Moore and I said, hopefully by January first, we can have this up and running and robust. I am cautiously optimistic it will be sooner than that, so.
So I wanted to thank Stacy for all your hard work in moving this forward. I've been talking about this for a few years now, and even as recent as today, I'm hearing from folks that the communication from the city to our residents is not very good. And I think utilizing public access for that little amount that is already paid for, so there's no new money being collected from anybody to pay for this, will make sure that we're communicating what's happening. If you've ever been in a hotel where you turn to one of the channels and it tells you what's going on in the hotel or what's going on in the city, it's kind of like that. And there's so much that with this, I've suggested that we crawl before we walk. And so what you will see January first may not be everything that you'll see by July first, but Stacy is the only one that's doing this, and hopefully you'll train a backup person as well, because if you hit the lottery, you're going to be out of here. So I want to thank you for all you've done. This is going to be huge for our citizens as far as communications concerned, and I can't wait.
Well, thank you for all of your help, and you're very welcome.
Okay. Next, I had Councilmember Seer under unfinished business.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if it's unfinished business or not. I'll try, you stop me if it's not. My colleague, Councilman Kelly asked, or didn't ask, but he made comments earlier, I don't know if it was a form of question or not, but for the city manager, are we for cannabis now I'm talking about? Just two questions. Are we following the right procedures right now? And that's number one. Nobody answered, and I thought there was a question in there, maybe I missed it. The second thing is, did I miss the report on the two meetings, public meetings we had on cannabis? How many people attended? Was there to one? Only about a dozen people spoke at one? I mean, did I miss the report or didn't we not get a report of that?
All right, on both of those, I think that the reports were sent out to council. I'll confirm that. I know that I did see the written draft of those that went out. Second, currently, the sale of non, of adult-use cannabis is prohibited inside the city of Peoria. So if you change the zoning regulations to allow it, you are allowing the sale of recreational cannabis inside the city of Peoria. So it's staff's perspective and view that when you take up the item about zoning... So, it's staff's perspective and view that when you take up the item about zoning, you are addressing the matter about whether or not you agree or disagree with that.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question about an item that I brought up a few meetings ago. I think, Mr. City Manager, you said it would be coming this month possibly on the Airbnb ordinance? So, I was just following up on the status of that.
Staff is working on a draft ordinance, and will be taking it to the zoning commission because there's some zoning regulations that are required for it. So, it'll be going to the Planning and Zoning Commission first. Once we finalize the draft, we'll get it out to the council.
Okay, so, do you think we'll have it by the end of the month or the next month?
It's probably going to be adopted more likely in the month of November, after it goes through the, the next planning zoning commission isn't scheduled until November. So, then, it will likely be the end of November that it would be coming to council for consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business, unfinished? Madam Clerk.
We would be at new business.
Before Councilmember Seer exits, I would like to, under new business, had several people asking us about the pink attire. So, I was wondering if you could just help us understand that under new business. Pink.
That's the Camry Scott.
That's not it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The month of October is the month for real men wear pink, and we're raising money basically for breast cancer. And so, the whole month of October, you'll see me wearing a pink tie and pink shirt and some socks also. So, and I do have a website, so if you're willing to help us help raise money for the cancer society and breast cancer, it'd be great. A lot of numbers on there, millions of people are affected by breast cancer, and not just women, men also. So, it's a great month to raise money and try to help a great cause. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for wearing pink all month, in recognition of that, we appreciate your effort. New business, Councilman Reganbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will have a couple council meetings before October 24th, obviously, but I just want to make sure everybody has P-Town Soup on their calendar. That's the quarterly dinner that P-CAF puts together to support Peoria's Citizens Against Violence. And I think it's one of the most impactful things that my family participates in because it really gets to the grassroots of what's happening in our neighborhoods and really helps raise money for those fledgling organizations. So, October 24th, it's a Thursday, 6:00 p.m., and this time, it will be at the East Bluff Community Center. Thank you.
Thank you. I had Councilmember Montalongo next.
Thank you, Mayor. So, just like to announce again about the city of Peoria, the subsidy program with Ring Security Systems. On Saturday, November 2nd, at Northwoods Mall, we will be having this event from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Northwoods Mall is generously hosting this event for us and also has agreed to donate $500 towards the purchase of cameras as well. I know that our city staff is also working on a communication to go out to the community here real soon. But just to give a little bit more detail, approximately, the Ring doorbell retails for about $200. The city subsidy will be $50, and Ring as well will be matching $50. So, the approximate cost will be around $100. Thank you.
Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a quick announcement about the historical Springdale Cemetery tours. They were last weekend and also this weekend. They will be on Friday, October 11th at 6:00 p.m., and Saturday and Sunday, on the 12th and 13th, at noon and at 2:00. It's a neat event. If you get a chance, please go out there. Not only do you get to see our historic Springdale Cemetery, but you learn a lot about its history and some of the prominent Peorians. So, if you're not busy or you're looking for something to do, go on out on one of these tours this weekend. Thanks.
Thank you. Any additional new business? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
We're at citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
Okay, citizens to address. Just need your name for the record, and we have a five-minute speaking limit. Up first is Jason Ayers. Is Mr. Ayers still here? Okay. Next is Stephen Morris.
Good evening, honorable members of this council. My name is Stephen Morris. Christian, a follower of Jesus Christ, the King of Kings and Lord of Lords. And I am also a husband, a father of five, a pastor of a small, local Christian church. And I too am a concerned citizen who truly desires the peace and prosperity of our city of Peoria very much. Today, I am asking this body to enact an ordinance declaring a day of prayer and fasting with Thanksgiving in the city of Peoria, calling on all of us in our city, myself included, to repent of our individual and corporate offenses against the Almighty God, to publicly and privately repudiate our rebellious ways and works, which are contrary to His righteous laws, especially the toleration and ongoing promotion of the murder of our neighbors, our newborn neighbors, our unborn neighbors, and abortion, which is contrary to God's righteous law, to love our neighbors, ourself, and contrary to His ongoing law, that we not take His name in vain, giving lip service to "in God we trust and one nation under God," while not honoring Him as God, as a person to whom we will all give an account, who is watching our proceedings even right now and hearing our every word. We would be enacting this ordinance consistent with the stated goal of our, that we swore, that you swore to uphold and defend in our Constitution. And the preamble of the Illinois State Constitution reads, "We, the people of the state of Illinois, grateful to Almighty God for the civil, political, and religious liberties which He has permitted us to enjoy, in seeking His blessing upon our endeavors." Then it goes and lists out the endeavors for health and public safety, welfare, eliminating poverty inequalities, assuring legal, social, and economic justice, domestic tranquility, and so forth. Truth be told, we're not doing too well with those in many respects. Maybe it's time to once again call on the Almighty. Our 16th president, Abraham Lincoln of Illinois, publicly proclaimed the vital importance of this constitutional call to thank Almighty God for His providential blessings on our state and its citizens, and to seek His blessings on the endeavors of civil governments. That's why during the Civil War, Lincoln issued three separate calls to national fasting and prayer, apparently not understanding the supposed separation of church and state that are required to keeping God out of the public square. In 1860, Lincoln wrote this, "Whereas it is fit and becoming in all people at all times to acknowledge and revere the supreme government of God, to bow in humble submission to His chastisements, to confess and deplore their sins and transgressions in the full conviction that the fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom, and to pray with all fervency and contrition for the pardon of their past offenses and for a blessing upon their present and prospective actions. And whereas, when our own beloved country, once by the blessing of God, united, prosperous, and happy, is now afflicted with faction and civil war, it is particularly peculiarly fit for us to recognize the hand of God in this terrible visitation, and in sorrowful remembrance of our own faults and crimes as a nation and as individuals, to humble ourselves before Him and to pray for His mercy, to pray that we may be spared further punishment, though most justly deserved, that our arms may be blessed and made effectual, and so on." Lincoln goes on to invoke the Almighty God, and he concludes with this and that. He says this, "That the united prayer of the nation may ascend to the throne of grace and bring down plentiful blessings upon our country." Today, we have largely forsaken the Almighty God and the deceitfulness of our hearts. We have vainly imagined that all the remaining providential blessings and liberties that we still enjoy were produced and will be safeguarded by our own efforts and ingenuity, funded by a perpetually increasing stream of public tax revenues taken as offerings to the sovereign state. We've come to view publicly invoking and petitioning God as an antiquated practice, a largely primitive thing that used to be done by those who were antiquated and superstitious. But the reality is, is that the one true God has not changed. His good has not become evil. He still is the just judge of all people to whom we will all give an account. So, I am urging you this day to do two things. I'm adding my voice to those who have previously addressed this council and appealing to you, who are charged to secure the rights of your neighbors, including your unborn neighbors, to declare Peoria, Illinois a sanctuary city for life. And I too am asking you before God and man to outlaw this heinous crime against humanity and abomination against who created us all. And lastly, I'm calling on you, the God-ordained civil servants of this city.
... and enact a city-wide day of prayer, repentance, and fasting, to seek the mercy of Almighty God on our city, and to give this forgiveness for our past and present, send a message to all of you.
Up next, we have Joshua Sanford.
Members of the Peoria City Council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Joshua Sanford, and I'm a servant of Jesus Christ, and I reside in the 2nd District of Peoria. I'm here to petition the council to act with integrity based on the oath you took. You swore to us that you would protect the rights of those you represent. Yet, due to political expediency and a convenient blind eye, you have not maintained that commitment when it comes to the two of our most vulnerable communities, those in lower-income neighborhoods and those that are yet to be born. I've watched as you diligently work for solutions to the issues that plague our city, ensuring that every opportunity is taken advantage of, and this is good and right. However, you look the other way when shops are set up in vulnerable communities to systematically kill children, especially minority children. This is at best hypocritical, but it doesn't need to remain that way. I'm asking that you remember your oath and move to preserve life and liberty within your city by declaring Peoria a sanctuary for life. We know that God has said, "Thou shalt not murder," and in most cases, we agree with Him. His command, though, applies even when we don't agree, and it's your duty to yield to Him. Jesus Christ rules and reigns, and I am encouraging you to bow to Him now where blessings can flow to you, not only for your integrity of office, but to Peoria as we cease killing those in our most vulnerable neighborhoods. Just as brave men and women stood up to the wickedness of slavery in generations past, or to the unspeakable crimes against the Jews, or even now to those minorities that are oppressed among us, I'm asking that you take the same brave stand against the unchecked murder half-braining under your authority. God judges with justice that does not wink at sin, and He promises to defend the fatherless. Please fulfill your oath to us and your obligation to God. Thank you.
Up next, we have Darcie Katie.
Thanks so much for taking the time to hear our thoughts and concerns tonight. Tonight, I'll be speaking on behalf of the Alexis Camery Scott Campaign in reference to the 20-year criminal record of the Carpenter family. We have VAR, James, also known as Latrell, and Seldrick. So, this is not only for all of you, but also for the public, to see what these 20-year rap sheets look like, and to get an understanding of why these individuals still have their freedom, because we certainly don't understand it all. Starting with VAR, multiple failures to appear within 2005.
Ms. Katie, this isn't going to cost you any time, so don't panic here yet. I just would like, corporation counsel, is this going down an appropriate road that the discussion of these individuals is?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I could not hear your question.
Just seeing where this discussion started, I just wanted to see if this was under the council rules, if the recitation of people at this venue is appropriate.
Your, your honor, I believe, without more of what I heard so far, I believe it would be appropriate to let her continue.
Thank you very much. Thank you. For people in the gallery, there is a level of decorum. Outbursts, like what we've heard from a couple different people tonight, won't happen. You will not be given an opportunity to address the council if you persist. People allow you to talk in quiet. Heckling and comments like you just made will not be tolerated. So, just for the record, this is not an opportunity to heckle, it's an opportunity to address the council. You can, you're free to use your opinion when you have time at the podium. So, I'll reset the clock. If you want to start over, you can. You've got 4 minutes and 11 seconds, but I'll reset the clock because I don't want to interrupt. I just want to make sure we were being appropriate here, okay?
So, to recap, we have multiple failures to appear, multiple resisting arrest, possession, operation of uninsured vehicles, driving on revoked licenses, attempting to elude an officer, failure to obey basic traffic laws, distribution of controlled substances, felony possession, use of a weapon or firearm, firearm without a valid void card, criminal trespassing on land, excuse me, trespassing on land, resisting arrest, unlawful use of a building, obstructing of an officer. This spans from 2005 to 2008, the records that I'm referencing for VAR Carpenter. Again, in 2008, we see distribution of a controlled substance. Continuing on, we go forth into 2009 and 2011, with aggravated discharge of a firearm on multiple counts, domestic battery, continued failure to appear, and distribution of a Moving on to James, also known as Latrell. His records begin in early 2000. Failure to appear, mob action, simple traffic violations, aggravated assault with a deadly weapon, unlawful use of building, home invasion, aggravated battery continued, disorderly conduct, obstructing an officer. That continues on into 2002 to 2004, then again in 2008. Felony possession of a weapon, failure to appear for such incident, driving on a suspended license, resisting an officer, firearm without a valid void card, local warrant, failure This continues on well into 2015 and 2016, where you see there are warrants issued for this individual, resisting an officer, unlawful possession of a controlled substance, and continued failure to appear. Finally, for Seldrick. Beginning in 2000, as you've seen with the other two, they have crime histories spanning well over 20 years, and yet, they're still allowed to walk free. Resisting an officer, obstructing an officer. Resisting an officer, obstructing an officer, firearm without valid FOID card, aggravated assault with a deadly weapon, aggravated battery, and great bodily harm. This ranges from 2000 to 2004. Resisting an officer, having a weapon without carry display license, felony possession and use of a weapon, aggravated battery with firearm, resisting an officer, failure to appear continued, obstructing an officer, resisting an officer, disorderly conduct multiple times. This continues on well into 2009 and 2012. Continuing resisting officers, resisting officers, aggravated battery, harm, harm to police dogs. Continuing on to felony charges for distribution of fentanyl, one of the deadliest drugs to plague Peoria, Illinois. Please consider keeping these individuals off our streets. Alexis, thank you.
Up next, we have Abigail Davison.
Hi, my name is Abigail Davison. I'm a 20-year resident of the Moss Bradley neighborhood. I'm a newer member to the Alexis Camry Scott Campaign. I was familiar with the case, but not the group that I'm with tonight. However, I'm glad that I met the people in this campaign. I have never seen so much resilience and strength come together, and it's a beautiful sight. Why is it, though, that I see so much coming from this campaign, but no participation from our city leaders? I don't see any city leaders proactive in this campaign to bring Alexis home, sharing the events, or even acknowledging the effort that this campaign has done for the last two years. Imagine laying your head down every night for two years with no clue where your child is. It gives me chills and makes my heart drop to my feet, as it should all of you here tonight. She was a mother, a daughter, a sister, a best friend, a person, a person who deserves justice, just as every other person, no matter what neighborhood she's from or what her background was. I was present at the last meeting, although I did not speak. I was here listening to each and every person who got up and spoke for Alexis, including her mother. Did any of you? Because not one person has reached out to April to even acknowledge that they had heard her. I'm disappointed because I know that there are better people here than that. After two years, I still see so much fight in this group to bring Alexis home. Even after letdown, after letdown, the strength is still there. It's about time they see that from those people in power who can help bring her home. From my understanding, people have spoken up and names have been given since day one. Why does April still have to live every day not knowing where her daughter is? Help us. Help Alexis. Help April get the closure she deserves. Because I promise you, none of us will stop until we have the answers or Alexis is found. We will continue to show up for her. Please add your humanity to ours. Thank you, Council and Mayor, for your time.
Up next, we have Sarah Martin.
Hi, my name is Sarah Martin. Been here a few times. Sure that you're tired of listening to me, and I'm tired of being here too. But we've come here so many times and asked for help, and I always do that, sorry. Okay. So helping isn't five or 10 minutes afterwards, and then not following through on what you say you're going to help with. That's not helping us. I don't know how you look at this mom every time she comes, and just let it go. I've seen her come in here, April, and beg for your help, all of yours, and nobody does anything. Last two weeks ago, I saw a girl come in here, and she didn't deliver very well, but you knew that she was calling out for help for her community. We don't have any city leadership. The citizens don't feel like there is anyone leading anybody anywhere. You're failing. You're failing all the citizens that you ran to protect and to help, and you're not. You don't show up. Going to a P-CAV dinner or whatever, he said, that's great. That is great. But there's crime every day on our streets, and nobody's there. You don't show up. You just don't. I don't understand it. I'm tired of coming to talk to you for nothing to happen and nothing to change. There's five seats open, district seats in 2021, and for whoever is watching on the camera and is thinking about running for those five seats, districts 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, we work hard all the time to try to find Alexis, and we will work just as hard to replace your seats. If you don't start helping the community, we will replace you. And I know you look at it right now like that's a long time away, but it's not. We will work just as hard to get you out of here as we worked to bring her home, and even though we haven't brought her home yet, we are working to, and we're out there all the time. So for whoever's thinking about running, if you're going to actually help the citizens, we will back you. We will knock on doors. We will do whatever we have to do, because nobody else up here wants to help anybody in the community. Thank you.
Up next, we have Michaela Traver.
Hello. I don't have anything written down this time like I did last time, unfortunately, but I kind of just wanted to say the same thing as everybody else, because I've only been here twice, and it kind of seems like none of you really care, and right now, everybody's making eye contact, which is kind of nice for the most part. But I watched everybody else talk, and over half of you were just kind of looking down, and I'd like to think you were taking notes or something. But like they all said, they've been coming here for two years, and nothing's been done, so it's kind of hard to believe anybody was taking notes, or anybody's going to do anything. And they're absolutely right, that these seats are going to come up, and they're going to come open, and nobody's going to be able to keep their job if nothing gets done. And I wanted to note, I realize it's frustrating when people call up from the crowd, but when people have been coming here for two years and seeing nothing happening, it's not like they're stomping their feet and throwing a fit, like after two years, anybody's going to get a little bit irritated and start to speak when they're not supposed to. So I know it's not appropriate exactly, but it's understandable. And I don't know if this, this obviously can't be addressed from what I've been told, but you guys sit here and talk to the organizations that come in and speak, but you don't respond to any of the citizens, like it's like you don't care. I don't know if you're just not, if you're really just not allowed to, or if you just don't care to reply at all. But maybe that's something you should consider changing, that you could reply when people are talking to you, and they might not feel like you're just sitting there with one of your hands to your face, waiting for this to be over, because the people sitting back here seem like they're paying more attention than the people that are up here. And I don't know, it's just, it seems really disrespectful to me, and it's really disappointing to see. I would like to see it changed, and I would love to see some of you guys at some of these campaign events. I've only been to one, unfortunately. I work two jobs. I work 12-hour days, five days a week. I'm going to my other job as soon as this is over. If you can find time, it's not that hard. It's a pain. I know, nobody wants to do it, but it's not that hard, and it's worth it. It is. I am here for Alexis, but it's worth it for other people, too, like that. Somebody brought it, I think you brought it up, that girl that came up here a couple of weeks ago, and she didn't present herself perfectly, but she was. She was just crying out for help. And I don't know, I hope somebody talked to her, but it doesn't seem like anybody's talking to any of the citizens, and I thought that was supposed to be your job. I don't want to stand up here and repeat myself. Like I said, I don't have anything written down, but just consider, you know, replying to the people that actually bothered to come up here and talk to you, and sit here for hours and listen to everything else. It is important. Thank you for listening, and I hope I see something change, and I would love to see some of you at some of the campaign events at some point. Thank you.
Up next, we have William Jones.
Good evening. William Jones. Somewhere in Peoria, that's all you need to know. Also known as Thug Town, USA, that's what you become. That's what you're known for all over the nation. I hope you're glad. I've lived in Peoria all my life, and I've never seen it this bad. And I want to say something tonight to the chief. I talked to him a few days ago. I made a comment here the last time I was here about all cops being bad and things like that. I was wrong. I want to correct myself. Not all of them are bad guys. Most of them just want to do their job and go home, and go home safe, and we need them. But there are a few bad apples in there. And with that being said, I want to say this. April, it's two years, as you know, it's been going on two years. I hope that doesn't just go through one ear and off the other to some of you council people tonight, and the chief. You, Mayor, I'm disappointed in you tonight, because I thought you was a nice guy, and maybe you still are. I wasn't trying to be rude tonight by stating that that was a public record. I thought you was trying to shut the woman up and stating what she said. So I don't know if you did that or not, if you meant to do that. But I appreciate you letting her go through with that, because at any time, I thought they would know that. If it's public record, I assumed you could go ahead and say it. That's why I said that. I wasn't trying to be disrespectful in any way, shape, or form. I could be, but I didn't. But I want to say, a lot of these events that go on, you'll appear to, and it seems like sometimes that some of you just show up when there's food being served. Then when the food's done, you're done eating, you skip out. You don't see it no more. And that ain't just with them, the police. That's some of you council members, too. You know, do we got to serve steak dinners to get you to come to a march or come to a search? If you come to a search, you don't even have to search. We just want your presence. That's all that matters, really. You know, give us 10 minutes of your time. 10 minutes ain't much. That's all we're asking for. If you could just show support by showing up, that makes a big difference. If you want the community to get with you, chief, that includes the police department. They want the help. They want the community to get with them and reach out to them. Let me tell you, they're scared, and they ain't going to come to you when they don't trust you. You know, you got to get people's trust first. You know, it's called respect. If you want it, you got to give it. It just doesn't come, you know, just, well, you give it to me, and that's it. It works a two-way street. Peoria's become a real bad thug town. I don't have to tell you. Look in the papers every day and on the news. If Peoria was the size of Chicago, we'd light the world on fire with the crime that's going on here. And you know that. I don't have to tell you. I'll tell you, it's getting worse. It ain't getting better. Is that all the Peoria Police Department's fault? No. People got to take responsibility, but so do you guys. It's not just all on him. It belongs to you guys, from the mayor down. And, you know, you got to step up, too, you know? And all we're asking for is a few minutes of your time, you know? What's it going to hurt, you know? We ain't going nowhere. We're going to be here. We're not going nowhere until she's found, Alexis Scott. And sooner or later, she'll be found. Maybe later. It's been two years, but we won't give up. April Allen's not going to give up, are you, April? I don't believe so. Any of you guys going to give up? Have you noticed that the crowds are getting bigger and bigger, and they're going to continue to get bigger? That's some things you want to take and keep in mind. It's getting bigger, and we're going to get louder. And the louder we get, the more angry we get. So just remember that. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Up next, we have Rachel O'Reilly.
Hello, Rachel O'Reilly. Maybe I wouldn't think it's suspicious that you're looking around, and your lawyer didn't even say anything, but it's almost like you're trying to protect these criminals. I can understand wanting to protect people's privacy, but when you haven't shown up for April, you haven't reached out to April, you have literally done nothing, and now you want to speak and say, oh, let's protect the background of criminals? It seems pretty suspicious, for one. For two, as far as the pro-lifers go, where are you? Three times, this is the third time you've been here. So now you know about Alexis Camry Scott, that there's a missing woman. So please, care as much for the born as you do the unborn. And the term sanctuary city...
...be appropriate to speak to the council.
Okay, 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 and the public, because this is also a public forum, you know, for discussion and democracy, to the council and the public, okay? Just the council, but this is public? So this is for the council? Not for the public, just for the council?
This is your opportunity to speak to the council and ask you to interact.
Okay, now you've cut my mic? Okay, so the council has been presented with a sanctuary city. The term sanctuary city was originally to provide sanctuary for immigrants. And hopefully, these pro-lifers that are advocating for the unborn are advocating as much for the term that the sanctuary city came from. There are immigrants that are having stillborns that want to keep their babies and are losing their babies because they're locked up. So hopefully, if you're caring for the unborn, I hope you really, really care for the born, too, like Alexis immigrants. Where's the community? Please, please get more involved. You can wear pink for breast cancer. That's great. Alexis went missing wearing pink. Why can't you wear pink for Alexis? Why can't you donate to help Alexis, since you're not helping us with your time, or your efforts, or any legalities? Why don't you help with what you can? Because it's looking really suspicious when you're not doing anything, and we, the public, are researching, and you're trying to silence us, is what it seems like. Thank you so much for this democratic process.
Madam Clerk?
We have an executive session.
Corporation Council?
Yes, Your Honor. A motion would be appropriate pursuant to Section 2C11 of the Exemptions of the Opening Meetings Act, which exempts discussions relative to pending litigation, as well as a motion would be appropriate pursuant to Section 2C21, which has to do with the closing of meetings for approval of previously closed session minutes.
We have a motion to go into executive session by Councilman Ruck Regal, seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. We have a motion to adjourn Councilman Ruck Regal, seconded by Councilman Euler. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. We would like to thank H. Wayne Wilson and his listening audience at WCBU, as well as Cable Channel 22, and this meeting is adjourned.